Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Pelzinski?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. Obviously, we're expecting some inclement weather. If indeed there's a reason to evacuate council chambers, council and department heads will filter here through the back door. Chief Kimball, raise your hand. He will take the rest of you downstairs by the stairs, and we're going to end up in the same place in the center without any windows in our city council or our city building here, our city hall building. So we will be in a safe place. It's even bulletproof, so it'll be very safe. The reason that we're splitting up is because we think we can do that faster if there is, for some reason. Captain in the back will take a look, and if there is not safety egress down the stairs that way, you will follow us and we'll get us all to the same place yet again. So hopefully, we don't need to do that, but we do have a plan for evacuation in case of inclement weather. All right. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation given by Alan Ross. Alan is the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Quad Cities, and he's joining us today on Zoom. Alan, thank you very much for being here.
Can you hear me?
You can. We're going to do the pledge first, sir.
Yes, right.
Very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Ross, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to do the opening prayer. Let me begin by saying that today, almost all Jewish communities incorporate a prayer for the government into their weekly Sabbath services. The first such prayer was introduced in the 14th century, but many prayers for the government have been crafted over the centuries. While specific wording varies, most versions ask for blessings upon the land and for government officials to have the counsel necessary to make wise and compassionate decisions in line with the values of our traditions. So let us pray. O guardian of life and liberty, may our nation always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert us to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of peace. May we honor those who have died in defense of our ideals. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and our country be sound in body and spirit, and let us all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Alan. Great to hear your voice. Be well. All right. We have some awards and a couple of proclamations today. We're going to deliver the proclamations and awards from the center of the room, but first, I'd like to recognize the following individuals and groups who have been awarded the 2023 Iowa Parks and Recreation Awards as the best in the state of Iowa. The best administrative assistant is Kim Radcliffe. So, Kim, come on up. I'll meet you here. Volunteer group in Iowa is the Bettendorf Park Ambassadors, and we are joined by Jim Mertens, Greg Martin, sorry, Greg Schellengasky, and Kurt Wheeler. So please come on up, all the park ambassadors. I hope I got you all that are here. The best service club is the Friends of the Bettendorf Parks Foundation, and I think we've got all of them, but if there are more, please join your group. Matt Mooney is the president, Steve Grimes, Kristen Jaden, and Betty Cerny. And Denny Blansley. And the best business support in Iowa for parks and recreation was the Tangled Wood. So we're very pleased that the Tangled Wood. We're hoping somebody can get here. We know that Tammy was caught. Is Mandy? Did Mandy make it? Okay, we've got a couple of folks who may make it. We'll accept the award on their behalf if not, and let's have Kim Kidwell. Oh, she's already up there. Kim Kidwell, our Director of Parks and Recreation, as well as, now you got me.
Family.
Well, no, what's the?
Culture and Rec.
Thank you. We changed it. I can never remember.
Whatever you want.
Now you got me. Is Pat here too? Oh, Pat Flaherty. With my long-term relationship with Pat, I would have recognized you walking in. I'm sorry. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. So I'm going to join Kim to present some awesome awards. Kim Cutwell, our Director of Culture and Recreation.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ladies and gentlemen, Kim.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. I am so proud of this group, these groups right here. This was my first year attending the Iowa Parks and Rec Conference, which was actually held here in Danforth, and we took most of the awards, and Danforth wants to say maybe didn't get any, but that was our award. Oh, they did get some.
Got one out of 12.
Whatever. Anyhow, I'm going to introduce and tell you a little bit about these groups here that were awarded. Out of the entire state of Iowa, all of the nominees that were nominated, all of these groups were chosen, so we are very proud and very happy to have them on our team. So our first recipient is Kim Radcliffe. So I'm going to put my glasses on. So administrative assistance are integral assets to our Parks and Recreation Department. Kim has worked for the city for 23 years, providing excellent administrative services to the department, and that is so all of us can do our jobs better, particularly me. So I really appreciate her. Superior customer service in addition to many, many other behind-the-scenes encouragement to staff, dealing with patrons, signing kids up for everything under the sun, our many problems, all the paperwork for our 200-some-odd part-time seasonal summer staff. Really, the list goes on and on and on. I would be here. You don't want to be here that way. So I just want to say how proud I am that Kim Radcliffe is receiving this honor. It's well-deserved, and we're super happy to have her on our team. Congratulations.
We have another award, a little piece of crystal that we tend to give out here from Glass Blast, but this is in recognition of Kimberly Radcliffe, the 2023 Iowa Parks and Recreation Best Administrative Assistant Award for you.
Thank you. I know, I just want to, I just want to say thank you specifically to Isaac Jacobs and Meredith Fabrizius and Nathan Pittman and Kim Kidwell, because their nominations sealed the deal, I'm told. They were just phenomenal nominations, so thank you, guys. I was just doing my job. But I do want to shout out to all administrative assistants, because we, there are so many of us that are so good, and I'm just fortunate to have a Park and Rec Association that can award me with something like this, but y'all should be awarded.
Very good.
Nathan, everybody's here for Parks and Recreation.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Good job. All right. So our next group was awarded the best volunteer group in the state of Iowa, and these are our park ambassadors. So the park ambassadors are a group of volunteers who have a commitment to keeping our parks safe and clean. The ambassadors volunteer their time to monitor our parks in the evenings from May all the way through Labor Day. They go out in groups, they ride around, they look for, you know, things that are unsafe. They look for maybe trees, debris, any kind of playground equipment, safety precautions, people who are maybe misusing our parks, people who are maybe in our parks later than they should be. And they're really like the eyes and ears of the police department as well as our parks. They just really help keep our parks safe and clean, and we are forever grateful that they help us out. And if you want to be a park ambassador, contact me later. But we really, really appreciate and probably don't say enough, but how much all of you contribute to keeping our parks. We have 26 parks in Bettendorf, and that's a lot of parks to track up, and they do just a phenomenal job. So thank you so much.
Another piece of crystal for the trophy case in recognition of the Bettendorf Park Ambassadors, 2023 Iowa Parks and Recreation Best Volunteer Group on behalf of City of Bettendorf. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jimmy, hour and a half max, Jimmy.
Go right ahead. I've got a little something to say. Appreciate it, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you as well as we did last Wednesday night to Meredith Fabrizius, Isaac Jacobs, Greg, Kurt here. 15-plus years for these two gentlemen here with our park ambassadors, and we have a couple other gentlemen that couldn't make it this evening that have about 18 years as a volunteer in our city as well. We need a round of applause for these. It's also a privilege to work with the City of Bettendorf Police Department, where we've run into them at some parks, and they're just great. They understand what we're going through. We understand what they're going through, and thanks to the Bettendorf Police Department. And last, but not least, to Jason Manful. I don't know if Jason's here tonight. I don't see him, but for doing such a great job with our parks and keep us, keeping us ambassadors aim to stop this violence and problems that are in our parks today. Thank you very much, people.
All right, our next award is for Service Club for the state of Iowa. So our Friends of Bettendorf Parks Foundation was awarded Best Service Club in the state of Iowa. So the Friends of the Bettendorf Parks Foundation are a phenomenal group. They raise money. They have various fundraisers throughout the year, like the Senior Golf Cart Tour, the Jamie Hill Golf Tournament, the Mother-Son-Father-Daughter Event, and many others, with a new one this year, Coffee and Cars. So if you're interested in that, just hit up our website. But what's really neat about what they do is most of the money that they raise go toward scholarships for kids who cannot afford to do our Parks programs. So about $16,000 a year is, helps these kids be able to do our day camps, our soccer programs, whatever kind of programming we offer that they otherwise would not be able to do. So we so appreciate them. They do all of the legwork. They plan all of these fundraisers themselves. They do, they get all of the volunteers. They do 100% of the work. So we are extremely appreciative for their efforts and happy to have them here to be honored tonight.
You get one too. Small token of our appreciation and recognition of the Friends of the Bettendorf Parks Foundation, 2023 Iowa Parks and Recreation Best Service Club. Please, you have the floor. Well, thank you, Council and Mayor, for putting on this for us and whatnot. It's nice to be recognized. This is a great group that I, that I'm with and whatnot. About half of us are here. We're a 13-member volunteer group that probably over the years has donated and raised close to $1 million that we put back into the city and whatnot. So it's all done by hard work from folks like this, so appreciate the night, appreciate the award. Thank you very much. Tall people in the front.
I've been in enough photos today.
How's that?
White angle.
Thank you. It goes to you.
And lastly, is the award for the Business Support. So this award was given to the Tangled Wood. So the Tangled Wood supports the Parks Department in many ways. They give money to our scholarship programs. They let us have our annual Park and Recreation Day there on a Saturday in May, where people come out and learn all about our Parks programs, learn about how they can work for us for the summertime. We have bike safety demonstrations there, bike helmet giveaways, and they always are so gracious. They give us a percentage of the funds that they make on that day and also other days throughout the year. They're huge. They help us fund our, some of our holiday parties. Last year, they helped us give incentives for summertime staff so that we could better recruit our staff in the summertime. So they are huge, huge support of the city and Bettendorf Parks and Recreation, so we're very, very lucky to have them on our side. So thanks to the Tangled Wood.
All right, we do have two proclamations today. The first is JA Day, which will be on April the 6th, and for that, we welcome Junior Achievement of the Heartlands Development Director Linda Wood for our proclamation. Linda, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Stay right here with me.
Yep.
All right. I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the City of Bettendorf will observe Junior Achievement Day on April 6, 2023 as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. And whereas junior achievement of the heartland's educational contribution equips young people to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Bettendorf. And whereas it is fitting for parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community to join in junior achievements' effort to ensure future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which they live. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 6th as Junior Achievement Day in the City of Bettendorf, and I urge all to participate. Here, here.
Here, here.
For you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Please, if there's anything you'd like to say.
Sure. Well, thank you for allowing me to be here. Hopefully, most of you have had some exposure to junior achievement, whether it's you personally have been through one of the courses or your kids have. There's always an opportunity to volunteer, but as far as Bettendorf specifically.
You can't take our community over Mark Twain. That's already old.
So for Bettendorf specifically, we serve over 1,300 students in nine different schools, and we have 59 unique volunteers. So if you're ever interested in volunteering, we're always in need for volunteers in the classroom. It involves like a 30- to 45-minute session in the class for five times, and you can do it kindergarten through junior high. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through the 15th, and for this, we welcome a bunch of people. We're so glad you're here. The Scott County, Scott Community Emergency Communications Center's Deputy Director, Tracy Screechfield now, and afternoon shift supervisor Jenny Jones, as well as dispatcher Nakara George. Don't think I missed anybody, because we had a couple that couldn't make it, right? Come on up, please.
Mayor, do you mind if I?
No, no, please. Chief, come on. Just had a two-hour meeting on this today. Are you kidding? Please. Nice to see you, ladies. Thank you for being here. All right, I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas emergencies occur around the clock and every day that require response from public safety resources, and whereas the prompt processing of emergency calls and determining the correct response resources is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our public safety professionals depends upon information obtained from those who dial 911 and reach the Scott Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are an essential safety line for our responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety dispatchers of the Scott Emergency Communications Center contribute substantially to successful outcomes for law enforcement and medical responses. And whereas this past year has continued to present unprecedented challenges for the public safety dispatchers of SEC, and those challenges were met with professionalism, patience, compassion, and unending resolve. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the Bettendorf community, and I encourage all of our citizens to honor those whose diligence and professionalism keep us and our city safe. Here, here. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Ladies, thank you for the great work that you do. Nice to see you all. All right, who's going to speak? Are you going to do it?
Yeah.
Come on up here.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for recognizing my staff. This is for them. This is not for me. So we have about 35 full-time dispatchers right now. We have four part-timers, then we have six shift supervisors. They are 24/7. They are truly the heroes behind the headset. They don't get the recognition that they deserve. We try to do as much as we can, and we greatly appreciate the City of Bettendorf letting us have this and recognizing our staff for what they do. They do a phenomenal job. As I said, we're short-staffed. They're putting in a lot of hours, a lot of overtime, but if you called 911, you wouldn't notice a thing. You would still be getting a profound service that you would have gotten if we had the staffing that we need right now. So thank you very much for this recognition, and thank you, guys, for everything that you do, because I wouldn't have a job without them. So I very much appreciate everything that they do, and I hope you guys do as well.
What if I wanted to become a dispatcher? How would I go about such a thing?
You would be about two weeks late, because we just closed our hiring. Yes, we will be hiring more. We usually hire, we try to hire about three every seven months. We can only train three at a time, although we need a couple more. That's just kind of the sweet side of how many trainers that we have and what would be too much on our staff. We can't train on all of our staff or all of our shifts just due to call load, and we want to make sure they're getting the best training that they can, so.
So about six months, if you want to be a telecommunications?
About six months. Well, probably, we tried it once, and then COVID kind of put a damp on things, but we do a career night at our center, and we're definitely going to do that again, and all it takes is a high school diploma and be able to type 35 words a minute. So if you can have those skills to come in, we can teach you the rest.
Fantastic. If I may?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to personally thank Tracy and your team. As Tracy said, I don't know if people truly realize they are the unsung heroes that are out there. They are our lifeline. Without them, we could not do our job. I mean, there's, they, the stress that I could never, I don't think any police officer could be a dispatcher, because the amount of, they hear it all. What we get is filtered, and they have to deal with the public and emergency situations, stressful, getting yelled at, you know, trying to decipher what is actually occurring and to do that, and I just want to personally thank, thank your team. Thanks for what you do. Thank you. Great to see you. Appreciate you. Brandon, you guys get a little sleep tonight. You don't have to do all kinds of crazy stuff.
I appreciate that, so much.
Well, thank you all for a great opportunity to recognize and thank great people doing great things in our community. Always a pleasure. Okay. We've come to public requests of council. If there's anyone here who wishes to be heard on an item that's not already on tonight's agenda, you may do so by approaching the podium in the back. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive and refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling. Please be respectful of your comments, but you get the opportunity now to address council and tell them what you would like to have happen if there's something that you would like to address. This is public request of council. If you'd like to be heard, please approach the podium.
My name is Margarito Albert Saldivar. I live on 2738 St. in Bettendorf, and the question I have is addressed to the police chief. It seemed that on the 28th of state, when the Alcoa traffic gets out and serious steel and all that, it's nothing but a racetrack out there. It's just, we need more protection for the city to slow them, you know, stop them, because I can look out my window, and it's like boom, 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 all the time. I mean, it's magic to me, because I've got something to look at. I also asked the state to step in and do a state study on State Street, you know, to either put a flashing light or a stoplight there to, to kill that traffic, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Skip, thank you. Aren't you right by a stoplight there?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your request. We hear you. We'll do the best we can. Thank you, Chief, for your work and the work of the folks in the Bettendorf Police Department to help with that issue. Anyone else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? Please approach the podium in the back. We'd like to hear from you.
My name's Chris Zerbonia, and I was just wondering, has Bettendorf established a quiet zone for the train horns that, you know, and they're going to increase the traffic and all that? They're just nonstop all night long at every, every block, and they honk, you know, just like I said, nonstop. Have they talked about doing that like the other cities have?
Well, yes, we've certainly talked about doing that. That's in the works. I'll let my city administrator, Decker Plain, address that if you'd like to briefly.
Your Honor, I can do it, or Chris can do it. In our negotiations with the CP Rail, we've negotiated monies, the equivalent of six quiet zones, and we have hired a consultant engineer that works with federal railroad authorities, and we've already examined those and what the cost of those are, and we've placed those now in our capital budget, and we're working our way through the process of seeking quiet zones with, under the permission of the FRA.
Okay, good. I was just wondering if that had anything done with that.
We're on it. It's not a real brisk process. One, government. Two, it's not local government.
Thank you.
Absolutely appreciate you being here, Mr. Zerbonia. Anyone else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for public hearing? Please approach the podium in the back. We'd like to hear from you. Okay, we're going to close to the request of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did. Your Honor, I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
Okay. This is a public hearing with regard to our maximum property tax levy, and we've received a whole bunch of information, of course, at the council level. Before we open the public hearing, Jason, did you have anything that you wish to say, maybe just to the folks that are here?
Sure. I can do a quick summary of the process that will be taking place tonight. This is the first of two public hearings completing the budget process. After the hearing, council will consider a resolution stating that property taxes levied for operations in FY 2324, beginning July 1 of '24, shall not exceed $21,628,082, equivalent to $7.85 per 1,000 of taxable valuation. Now, that's just the levy for operations. It does not include the debt service levy. Importantly, passage of this resolution does not obligate council to adopt the budget and levy.
Any discussion on this resolution? We've certainly discussed it an awful lot. We had some budget meetings. We had a two-day budget conference or event where we worked so hard. So, we've been working on it for quite a while. All right. No comments. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right. We have unanimously approved the maximum levy, so thank you very much, Jason Chat. Thank you to all the department heads and all of our friends in finance who worked so hard on that budget. Not once, not twice, not three times, but four different times. We move to a public hearing on our 2023 alley rehabilitation program. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay. Brian, this is our annual program. Would you like to enlighten us any further?
I do, your honor.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, just as the, uh, the mayor, um, mentioned, this is an annual program. This year, we're going to be reconstructing six alleys. I just want to point out, if you recall back in the fall of 2015, I presented a plan to council where we were going to rehabilitate our existing, uh, seal code or asphalt alleys that were significantly deteriorated across the city. Uh, we identified 66 of those alleys at that time. Uh, under this new program, uh, where we not just reconstruct these alleys in full-depth concrete, uh, we came up with a plan to where we reconstruct them in full-depth asphalt with drain tile. Um, so like this year, like I said, we're going to be doing six. At the end of this year's program, we will have completed 63, or 53 of the 66 alleys that we targeted, uh, to be reconstructed. So, that leaves us with 13 left, and this is a very important program, obviously for public works, because, um, all my staff in the, uh, first ward collect solid waste, bulky waste, yard waste, and recycling through the alleys, uh, in the, uh, southwest part of the city. So, uh, we's happy that you guys continue this program, uh, for my staff.
Jason, you get the gold star for one more week, and then maybe Brian's got to hold it for a couple of days now with the alley program. All right. Let's open the alley reconstruction or rehabilitation program, public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Let's close that public hearing. Resolution for council member Sexer in the first ward with all those alleys, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the plans, specifications, and form of contract for the 2023 alley rehabilitation program. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Yes. Council member Brown.
Just to check, Brian, um, in between Holmes and, I can't remember the street. I don't know if it's Mississippi off Sixth. Um, the alley there, it was supposed to get done, there's a corner last year. Is that on this section?
That is correct. It's identified as alley number one.
Is it one? Okay. Okay. Just wanted to check.
That was the one that, um, that we did not get to last year due to funding, so then we carried it over to this year's program.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because I know those neighbors talk about it.
Any other? All right, Michelle, please call the roll.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right. We now move to a public hearing with regard to the 2023 sidewalk repair program. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right. Brian?
Thank you, your honor. This is really nothing special. This is, uh, just removing and replacing existing ADA handicap accessible ramps, uh, at targeted intersections throughout the city in all five wards, as well as, uh, sidewalk replacement in, um, that had been identified through staff inspection or complaint driven by our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Let's open the public hearing with regard to the 2023 sidewalk repair program. Anybody here wish to be heard on that program? Skip, go right ahead to the back and pick up the mic. You proved to me you know how to do this. You've been here a few times.
My name is Margarito Albert Saldivar, and I got one thing, this thing about repairing the sidewalk, and you guys have not been repairing it. It just sits there, it's the same old crap all the time. I keep getting cars coming at me, and I have to take a dodge, and I'm back in the hole again. And there, there it is. Some guys just will not move from that area. I'm back in the hole again.
Where is the hole, Skip?
By, uh, the smoke store. What's that? Is that 23rd Street?
I know what you're talking about.
I would like to speak, your honor.
Yeah, we, at one point in time, you've also come to us with that public request of counsel, and I know staff checked it out. I think we're not going to have great news. Brian?
Thank you, your honor. A couple of years back, when we reconstructed, uh, 23rd Street, I believe it was, and that alley that runs east and west on the north side of the smokes, uh, smoke shop that, uh, Mr. Salivar is, uh, referring to, um, that's all been reconstructed in concrete. The sidewalks have been reconstructed in concrete. But what happens is, is that somebody continues to drive over into the boulevard area adjacent to the, uh, driveway approach and sidewalk continuously as they're pulling in and out. Now, there's, there's plenty of room to maneuver through there, but somebody continues to do that, and staff continues to fill it with dirt. So, there is nothing wrong with the sidewalk. There's nothing wrong with the approach or street in that location he has mentioned.
Okay. And we keep trying to work on it?
The question is, if there's nothing, when somebody's coming at you and he pushes you off the, pushes you off the path to get free, what are you, what are you going to do? Are you going to fix up all that mud and crap they run you into?
But I think what we've heard is that we, we try to. I don't think that's city property.
It is not city property, your honor. It's actually private boulevard, uh, but, but my staff does continue to go down there periodically and, and fill the holes in, um, as needed.
Okay. So, that's what we're doing, Skip. We're, we're filling it as much as we can.
One thing on Central Avenue, once you go past by the school?
All right. Make it quick. That's not on this issue. Go ahead.
The street needs to be re, re, repaired because it's all tore up, and that's it. I won't bother you no more.
I just want to say real quick that that's on our five-year program through our S T P program, so we look at completing that within the next, uh, few years. Uh, that'll be a federal aid project. That'll be managed through my department.
80/20 match federal money?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Let's close that public hearing. We'll move to the resolution. Council member Brown, please.
Thank you, your honor, and Jerry will be excited about this. Um, I have a resolution approving the plans, specifications, and form of contract for the 2023 sidewalk repair program. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here on the sidewalk repair program? Yes. Council member Nauman?
Thank you, your honor. Brian, can you explain to the council, just remind us, what the process is? I think you said citizen complaints and city inspection. What's the best way? I mean, I know when you're out on walks, maybe is there, do you mark it and say, okay, this is probably ripe for repair? I, I guess I just need a little bit of a brief on what the process is.
So, we try to hit all five wards, um, Alderman, Nauman, and, you know, we sit there and pick certain sections of wards that we know are the older part of, of the city and certain wards, um, and, and target those. We do not like to put paint dots on them or an X on them that they're going to be removed or replaced or maybe replaced in the future, because as soon as we put a mark on them, then somebody's going to say, hey, the city put a mark on them, and we're going to do it. But we do sometimes just put a paint dot in the corner, and then we do have it GPSed or, uh, a location map that we have on our G I S network, uh, that we can come back then and, and monitor the situation. Um, our ordinance currently states that, uh, sidewalks are the homeowner's responsibility to replace, but, uh, so we'll come in and target just those, um, one or two panel areas that we identified across the city. Uh, but if it's an entire sidewalk, that would actually be the homeowner's responsibility to fix. Um, but our, my construction engineering staff will be out there during the winter months when it's not snowing, actually identifying those trip hazards or whatnot. Uh, just last year, we tried a new program over at the library, which I believe was very successful, and actually over there at the family mus, uh, family museum, uh, where we were actually, uh, hired a contractor to go in there and grind down some of these trippers. We found out that, that we can probably get quite a few more done than actually removing and replacing them. So, we may be looking at, um, moving some dollars from, uh, one account to another in order to, uh, take advantage of that and get more, um, bang for our buck on some of these trippers across the city.
So, to further clarify what you'd like folks to do, and council members included, it's really more to just report that. No guarantee it'll be fixed, but just make sure it's on your radar and accounted for some way?
Yes, sir, and they can always call 344-4088 and contact my operations staff, who will then send that over up to engineering, and then we can get it on a list.
Great job. Thank you, sir.
Don't we have the Cartograph part of the program where citizens could?
Yes.
See Click Fix?
We actually have, uh, the Cartograph system down in operations that, that does it, but it also correlates all that information to our G I S network.
Right. So, if I saw something, then what's the program I go on to to, is there a way to do that? We thought we had a way to do that.
There, there was a program through See Click Fix with Cartograph Bot, but I'm not sure if they still support that, that app.
That I don't know, but I can look into it.
Yeah, let's, let's see. Cause that way it's real easy. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Uh, any further discussion? Yes. Council member Sexer.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, this is a safety issue, and this is a great program that the city has pursued for many years, and, uh, it's part of the service the city provides.
Further discussion? Yes. Council member Baden.
Thank you, your honor. Brian, could you just, uh, you and I had a talk about this the other day, but for the people that are watching the meeting tonight, could you tell them about the water turnoffs and turn-ons that are out in the middle of the sidewalk that are sometimes two to three inches high, higher than the sidewalk, who they need to call other than you?
Yeah. Great, great question. So, we do have a lot of, um, water valves and curb stops, private curb stops, you know, for the water services that lead into the home that are actually installed right into the sidewalk. And obviously, as, um, with the freeze-thaw cycles that we have over the winter months, it seems like the sidewalk sinks or those, uh, valves raise up. Um, typically, that is, uh, homeowner's responsibility as far as the small curb stop that shuts off the water directly to their home. But if there's a valve issue, it's usually typically six inches in diameter. It's, it's a blue in color. Uh, they typically spray paint in blue, and, um, that would actually be, uh, an Iowa wa, Iowa American Water issue. You can contact Iowa American Water. We have all their information also linked on our website if they have a complaint for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right. We have unanimously passed the 2023 sidewalk repair program. We're going to move to a couple of forest cover slash rivers and streams, stream bank cover, um, applications. The first is a public hearing at number 14 for 3,000 Barcelona Terrace. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication, and we did, uh, send out letters to the neighboring community, or the neighbors.
Sure. Within, uh, what is it? 200 yards?
200 feet.
200 feet?
Yep.
I, I actually got one. Yeah. Greg or anybody else respond?
No.
Oh.
They did not.
Do you want to take this briefly?
Sure. Um, thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
These, these next, uh, four items, um, are items that council has seen before. These are applications for tax exemption under Iowa law for natural conservation and wildlife areas that are not used for economic gain. Um, the process is that there's an, an application made, the Soil Conservation District, um, signs this as, these properties as eligible for this tax exemption. Because it's in the city, the city council would have to approve this, and then ultimately the County Board of Supervisors is the final body to approve these, um, these applications. Again, these are both of the property at 3,000 Barcelona Terrace and at 4340 Tanglewood Road are, are, uh, properties that the city council has approved in the past and that, um, they have been found to have been eligible for this exemption.
Thank you very much. That's Chris Curran, our city attorney. All right. Let's open the public hearing with regard to forest covers for a portion of the property located at 3,000 Barcelona Terrace to qualify as a tax exemption. Anybody here wish to be heard on the item? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Council member Adamson, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving a request for tax exemption for 3,000 Barcelona Terrace. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Council member Adamson, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving a request for tax exemption for 3,000 Barcelona Terrace. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, 3,000 Barcelona Terrace has been taken care of. We move to 4340 Tanglewood Road, and this is a request for forest covers, streams, and rivers, as well as river and stream banks for a portion of that property. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication, and I did send out letters to the homeowners within 200 feet of that property.
Perfect. Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to 4340 Tanglewood Road. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Council member Baden.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the request for tax exemption for 4340 Tanglewood, Tanglewood Road. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the tax exemption for portions of 4340 Tanglewood Road. Let's move to our consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the same at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on consent. Are there any particular items any council member would like to discuss at this time? Had an opportunity to do so yesterday and discuss any of these with staff since we saw the agenda Friday. I'm seeing no discussion. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, each and every item on the consent agenda has been unanimously approved. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
One item, your honor.
Okay, we got a couple items. Council member Adamson?
Thank you. I didn't, this wasn't really a sidewalk repair, so I didn't bring it up then. There, and I brought this up. I don't remember who's working on it, but there are, there are quite a few different areas in town. We have a sidewalk, houses in a sidewalk, empty lot, sidewalks, and the lot's been empty for 15 or 20 years. I understand not to have somebody that's, if it's an active construction area, you don't want to have trucks driving over the sidewalks and stuff, but at, at some point, somebody needs to put in a sidewalk so kids can walk to school without having to go out in the street and there's quite a few areas and some, some of them in fourth ward, and I've seen them in other, other wards. So, so could somebody kind of look into that and talk about it?
Yeah, we, we brought this up at goal setting, and this is probably another topic that we need to sit down and, and discuss further, but we've identified several areas across the city that just have, as you, as you discussed, areas where in a subdivision, existing subdivision where they're pretty much built out, but there's one or two homes that are, that do not have the sidewalk. And, but we just need to sit down together and develop the policy. And then obviously, if that's something you want the city to fund or whatnot, we'd have to look at incorporating that into our capital improvement program.
Well, the one, the one I'm aware of in fourth ward, the homeowner has purchased the next lot over so to control, to control it, but it's been for a long, long time. And they own the property. I don't think it would be the city's responsibility, but just something, just something to look at, please.
Okay, yes, council member Connor.
Do we have the ability to assess that to the property owner?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
And otherwise. Council member Sexer, please.
Thank you, your honor. Otherwise, I see on quite a few of these developments, when we see the, the plat and the site development plan, there's always a note on the drawings that says the city has the authority to direct the sidewalk to be put in at any time. Can't we enforce that and require some of these developers to follow through if they didn't sell a lot? Why, then they're responsible for putting in a sidewalk?
Your honor.
Yes.
Typically, if the development is active, we wait through the active, what I would call the active period of the development. If you use, for instance, my subdivision that I live in, the last home just got developed and the first home started about 12 years ago. So during that period of time, there would be lots that would not be connected during that period of time. But once everybody gets fully developed out, the subdivision is incomplete. And in that case, now the entire subdivision has sidewalks. There are areas of town where there is no sidewalk in any part of the development. And the council's going to have to decide, does it want to make the, go back and take some subdivisions that don't have any sidewalks and order those in? And you can imagine the political hell you'll take over that. Or is there in a subdivision, a, say, maximum period of time of, say, a 10-year period or an eight-year period where the sub, the developer has to build it out? And if not, then has to build it out, or there has to be an escrow amount set aside for that. But typically, if you set the monies aside at the beginning of the development, we all know with the escalation in costs, it won't cover the entire cost. So you have to, we have to figure out how we make that happen. And we do have a policy that if it's in between, say, an area where schools are, we can order that in and could order that in and have ordered those in in the past so that we have connectivity. So as Brian pointed out, we talked a little bit about this in goal setting, and I think we want to work our way through a policy that everybody can live with.
Council member Brown?
Greg would probably have to answer this, but it sounds like, like this example, when people purchase a lot just to expand their yard, they don't have any, you know, they're not going to want to spend the money to put a sidewalk through that lap they're going to keep empty. So those situations differing from, say, a neighborhood like Jerry's that doesn't have, you know, or Surrey Heights, you know, they don't have sidewalks. So to me, that's kind of a whole different ball of wax.
I'm talking more about gaps.
Yeah, this, the gaps.
Not a, not a hole, not a hole.
And, and, and to the point.
There's two different things.
The question is, in the gap, does the gap go somewhere?
It goes from sidewalk to sidewalk.
It, but I mean, it, it does, is it near a school? Is it near a church? Is it near, does it make sense to order that in immediately versus just to fill the gap? So those are the things we'll probably have to talk about and how we go about that.
Council member Nauman.
Thank you, your honor. I was mentioning with Director Kidwell last night that we should probably throw some information out on the April 22nd event. Kim, do you want to briefly touch on that? I think that's super cool and entrepreneurial.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, council member Nauman. So April 22nd is a fundraiser held at the family museum. It's our yearly fundraiser called Night at the Museum. This year, it's a 60s groovy theme. So grab your bell bottoms and come on over. It's adults only, so in the children's museum, there'll be no children that night. We're going to have a band, spin art, Spirograph, all kinds of food and beverages from 15 local establishments. We'll have silent auction, and all of us here will be dancing for you. Think Brady Bunch in tracksuits. It's going to be great. So tickets, you can buy tickets online, right through our website, or you can stop in in the family museum and also buy tickets. So join us. It's going to be a great time.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order this evening?
No, sir.
All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Thanks for being here. Stay safe. Anybody get any?